Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our first public budget hearing in the City Commission of Coral Springs. We'll start with a call to order, Deborah.
Certainly, Mayor Brook.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carter. All right, Commissioner Sarah.
Present.
Commissioner Vignola.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
City Manager Babanek. City Attorney Hearn. I see you all. I don't hear you, but I see.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Great. If everyone would please rise and join us in a moment of silence for whatever's in your heart or on your mind. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Sarah, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. John, if you'd be kind enough to read the virtual meeting statement, please. Get unmuted.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting should be held in accordance with Coral Springs Resolution 2020-16. Due to the ongoing state of emergency and recommendation from public health authorities, the City of Coral Springs recommends that all persons view and participate in this meeting through electronic means. The viewing, the meeting can be viewed on City TV Blue Stream Channel 725, 25, 25.7, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, online at coralsprings.org backslash City TV, and can be heard on City Radio 1670 AM. For those individuals who may not have access to view the meeting by any of the virtual means provided above, the city is providing access to view the meeting on City TV outside and at the Coral Springs Municipal Complex at 9500 West Sample Road, Coral Springs, Florida. If you plan to attend, please wear a mask, practice social distancing, and do not stand in closer than six feet to those around you. Public comment will be received today by phone and email. The local calling number is 954-344-5900. If you want to submit a written public comment, please complete the form located at coralsprings.org backslash public comment. For those attending the physical livestream at City Hall, a method will be provided for you to call in. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, John. Our next portion of the meeting is public comment. And for those of you that will be commenting from the public, please understand we likely don't respond directly to what you're sharing with us until later in the meeting during Commissioner or City Manager or City Attorney comments. So please don't feel offended if you don't elicit a direct response from us during this portion of the meeting. Who's our first signed speaker, Deborah?
Mayor, we have five signed speakers, and the first, I believe, is Travis. And Eric will queue him up. And I am aware that certain speakers would like to turn their time over to another speaker, so you may hear that.
Okay, so they'll let us know. And again, if you are speaking from the public, please let us know your name and your address. And we will be patient.
Mr. Mayor.
Hi there.
I have Stephanie Pearson, not Travis, transferring in.
Great, welcome, Stephanie. I see public comment is unmuted, but I don't hear anybody just yet.
Mayor, I can take this time to let you know, we do not have anyone currently outside waiting to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Do you think we're having technical issues, Justin, or?
Actually, we do. It says it won't transfer, which is kind of the magic that happens, so.
It happened, so Stephanie, if you'll bear with us, please, and everybody else, we appreciate your patience.
I'm sure he's working on it.
Well, while we're waiting, I hope everybody had a good weekend and got to spend some time with your family.
Mr. Mayor, Stephanie is on the.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Stephanie.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay, I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Pearson. I'm here as a longtime Coral Springs resident and also as the Environmental Issues Chair for the Legal Women Voters of Broward County. I've communicated with some of you by email and also by phone regarding the recycling program. And I'm asking you today, as you review the budget, to reconsider your decision to drop recycling. Of course, government must spend our taxpayer dollars wisely, but it also must be the champion of doing what is right, protecting our environment and not wasting our resources. The public wants recycling. There are some people who are apathetic, but most want to recycle. Unfortunately, the recycle right message did not reach most people in the city. They did not receive the message that contamination of the bins might lead to dropping the program altogether. People either didn't know what should or shouldn't be in the blue bin, or just assumed that certain items must be recyclable and that it would be sorted out at the back end. A public recycle right message must be accompanied by a rigorous monitoring of the bins, stickering bins with non-recyclables, and rejecting repeat offenders. It is the only way to truly educate the public and control contamination. Incineration is not really recycling. Some energy is created, but so is pollution, and it just encourages our wasteful habits. If you decide to discontinue the recycling program, we urge you to offer some options. Drop-off programs for items that still have good values, such as aluminum and cardboard. This will help keep recycling in people's minds until we have a comprehensive county-wide program. Going forward, in good recycling markets and bad, we need to reduce our waste upfront. The city should get on board with waste reduction initiatives now. Single-use plastics are the worst offender. They are a scourge on our environment and a threat to our public health. We can work with our businesses and residents to reduce waste and set up waste reduction initiatives in city government. I thank you very much for your consideration, and we're happy to speak with you further. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you for your leadership. I saw Commissioner Vignola's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke with Mr. Pearson last week, and one of the things that we had spoken about was the drop-off site, and I had a... I'm sorry.
Yeah, hold on. We've got to turn off the public comment for the moment.
Okay, so I had spoken or told you that it was something that I had spoken to the City Manager about, the drop-off program. I believe we currently do for cardboard already, and staff is already looking at doing something for metal, aluminum, and such. Can we have the City Manager, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, just speak on this item?
I don't mind at all. Is that okay with you, Frank?
Mayor, that's fine with me. I can bring up the speed as to where we are and what our future looks like in this area. So ever since we started to see the market kind of really go dormant for recyclables, we've challenged staff to look at different ways to do recycling. One of the things that we are putting in place immediately or have in place or are enhancing is that drop-off site at the waste transfer station. Right now, we do have the ability to drop off cardboard that does go to recycling, and we're working on a metals container as well as a plastics container to be put out there as well. Right now, the market for cardboard is somewhat existent. The market for metals is somewhat existent. The market for paper is barely, barely hanging on, and plastics is down to basically water or soda bottles and milk jugs and those types of things without lids. The other thing I've done is, and I appreciate the comment of the Speaker before, because that's exactly what we're doing. We're part of the Coalition for Broward County that is looking for a long-term solution here. We're also reaching out to recycling plants outside of Broward County, in St. Lucie County and in Dade County, to see if we can't get them engaged to get a recycling program going back up and running. It is not our intent to, at this point, to do waste energy forever. This is a stepping off point to kind of get through the times we're in now to find a more sustainable way to carry us through the ups and downs of the recycling market. The recycling market is just not something that's strong, and it's not something we have control of because we rely heavily on other countries to set the market for recyclables. I have Peter Floy on the line as well, and Peter is probably the most knowledgeable person that I know of when it comes to recycling. If anything I said, Peter, is not accurate, I'd ask you to please correct me. But Mayor, what we're going to do, as soon as staff comes up with a long-term plan, which will be before the end of the year, we plan on bringing it back to the Commission in a workshop format so the Commission can give us consensus and/or direction of how we want to proceed with recycling into the future. And as another note, we will be leaving both bins in place, and we will still be working on messaging to try to get the public to recycle with, while reducing the amount of contaminants that are put in a recycling bin. And Commissioner Vignol, I'm not sure if that answered your, what you were looking for or not, but that's kind of where we are.
That's perfect. You know, one of the things that I know, I think everybody in the country is concerned with when you talk about local government is as cities are transitioning away from the way we've done recycling is to make sure that we keep those good recycling habits. So I hate to see us go ahead and get rid of those recycling bins. We want to promote that, and so that way, when the market does rebound, we don't want to change those habits that a lot of us have been building towards for, you know, 30, 40 years. I think that's really important, that we don't change the bins, that we don't do anything like that. We try to monitor contaminants either way and treat it just like we normally would. The papers and such, and we know we've discussed paper for the last almost year as a commission when they were talking about getting rid of the paper recycling program, waste management was. You know, the concern is when you go out on the West Coast in California, Oregon, Portland, you have paper, you know, like the Portland area, I mean, you have paper manufacturers that buy up the recycled paper. Out here on the eastern seaboard, we don't really have, I don't know of any such facilities in the area. So our paper gets sent overseas and sold overseas, and with the market being the way it is, it's just not cost-effective. And I know the entire Commission is very supportive of recycling, and that's always been a big push, and Coral Springs has been on the forefront of that for decades. Unfortunately, right now, it's just a really tough time, and I can't wait to the time when we're able to go back to the regular way of doing recycling. But I think a drop-off site like Mr. Babanek was talking about is probably the best way forward at this point.
Mayor, if I may, could I ask Peter if he had anything he wanted to add to that, or if I was accurate in my statement?
That's fine. Hi, Peter.
Hi, yes, good afternoon. I would have to agree with everything that both the City Manager as well as Commissioner Vignola said. I think in the short term, the drop-off program gives those really dedicated recyclers an option. Separating the material, it really is a tough road to hoe right now with processors being reluctant to take material, their inability to move material to prime markets. COVID doesn't help, but you know, I think, I think there is generally an interest at getting something reestablished. There's a meeting with, the cities are, obviously have recycling at the top of their list right now in terms of coming up with some solutions. So I'm hopeful in the next couple of months, or at least within the next year, that there'll be something that's a little bit more robust. But I think the city's approach of going with the drop-off program makes a lot of sense right now. And, you know, and I would agree that trying to keep people's interest in keeping the second bin and the key will be is when we, when we kick off the program again, is we need to have a robust education program to clearly explain to people what it is, what we're doing, and why we're doing it.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. So Frank, what does that mean now? What does that mean in January regarding that second bin and disposing of the recycling products in that second bin?
We want everybody to follow the proper recycling protocol with what they're putting in their second bin. For now, that's going to waste energy, and hopefully, as we continue to work through this, we can get a solution to get back to true recycling in the near future. So we're going to work on this aggressively. I've talked to Bill Otto, who works closely with Peter, and they are working on this as we speak, and hopefully will have an answer for us. But we want residents to continue their recycling habits. Until such time, we can get a processor that is willing to take the recyclables, and we don't have to pay an absorbent amount of money for them to do it.
Yeah, so this is not about us not being desirous of doing so. It's about the financial impact at this time due to the market that's so exorbitant that we're looking for waste to energy at this time. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's a fair statement. That's an accurate statement.
Great. Commissioner Simmons? You got to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager Babanek, did you, did you go over kind of where we are with the county as well? Like where are we with that, in a part of that committee as far as this goes? Because I think we just make sure that we let people know that we're not, we're literally doing everything we can. It's just right now, especially when you think of COVID, that we have to, we have to save as much money as we can in order to kind of continue to provide the services that we provide in the city.
Yes, sir. So we are part of that county coalition that is looking at a sustainable recycling program. Peter and Bill, Peter has represented us, and that Bill Otto represents us in that. And Peter, do you want to bring us up to speed as to what's happening with that coalition and really give us a feel for what's going on there?
Well, the working group, which is nine elected officials that were charged with reviewing what the options are and the next steps, you know, has been meeting, I would have to say that their schedule has been impacted by COVID and the inability to meet in a large group. But in, they had tasked the city technical representatives, or known as TAC, Technical Advisory Committee, to look at what cities were looking for, what are some of the options they should be considering. And I think that certainly recycling was one of the things that was on the top of their list. So I think where they are right now, they're having a meeting tomorrow. They're getting close to trying to make a decision on what type of administrative background should be put in place. Under the old days, there used to be an inter-local agreement that bound most of the cities together. Another, a new ILA, a new inter-local agreement is one option. Doing a dependent district or an independent district, which puts a little bit more control to the state or the county are other options. There's pluses and minuses on either. That is to be discussed tomorrow morning. And I would expect that they will be trying to narrow down what the, what the recommendation is. And at that stage, they're more than likely to be coming back to each one of the cities and say, this is, this is what our current thoughts are. Are you still interested in participating? Would you sign an inter-local agreement? You know, and the $64,000 question is, well, you know, people pay $45 a ton to get rid of material now. If they went to a district and created a MRF and had another waste energy expand, waste energy expansion, you know, the cost for overall system probably would be going up, or more than likely to be going up. So in a tough budgetary situation, how much people are willing, how much more people are willing to spend? You know, five years ago, we were at almost $100 a ton. It dropped precipitously down to 45 or mid 40s. And now, probably somewhere in between, if you wanted to have a centralized MRF, if you wanted to have, you know, a few other programs, you know, under a central, under with some sort of central administration, you may not have to be back at 100, but you may be more than 45. And so I think that, you know, that's the wrestling match that's going on right now. And I, my guess is that they will be making a decision on that, saying this is what we think the majority of people would like. I don't think they have a dollars and cents plugged into it right now. But I think over the next, you know, certainly within this next budget cycle, I would like to think that people have a decision as to whether they want to stay just with what they have. You know, whether they want to have something a little bit more, which everybody said that they wanted. 100% of the city said, yeah, we want to join forces pre-COVID. That was their, that was their viewpoint. So where we are now in the COVID budgetary type of things and making those decisions, I think this recycling thing, you know, from my vantage point, is what's going to help people make a decision. Yes, we need to have a little bit more control ourselves. Yes, we probably need to have our own facility with some private sector entity running it, but something that we have some brick and mortar stake in the game. And so I would not be surprised over the next three to six months that you're hearing a lot more. And it will obviously be a City Commission decision, and I think they're trying to get as broad a buy-in as possible. But I mean, there's, there was a lot that was done, and, you know, a lot of the elected officials were, you know, strongly advocating for some sort of joint coalition and joint action. And then COVID hit and sort of disrupted everything. So I think just as the economy's coming back and people are coming back into more of a normal type of lifestyle, that this is going to get raised up again, and something will be back in front of you in the next couple of months, hopefully.
So Commissioner Simmons, what I do want you to know, and the rest of the Commission, is staff is at the ready. We will be flexible and agile when it comes to this. And when an opportunity presents itself, we will certainly bring it to the Commission for action. And meanwhile, we will look for some options that, you know, other options that we can pursue.
Great. Joshua, go ahead, Commissioner. You're muted, though, again.
No, the mute button is getting me today. So it's had a follow-up statement. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think it is important, again, to put out there that we are not trying to continue to add to the damages that are happening to the environment and to the planet. I think when we looked at it from a business perspective, as far as what we could afford and what we cannot afford at this time, this is the best decision we could do to kind of stop the bleeding, if you will. I also think that it's important to know I also think that it's important to know that I, well, not I, but just this commission, we've always done what we needed to do when at least it came to the environment. And I think this was not an easy decision for any of us. I also don't think this was something that, you know, we were trying to hide from the public or anything of that nature. I don't think we were trying to be nefarious in making these decisions. This isn't some, you know, we're not some corporation that is, you know, dumping, you know, toxic green waste into, you know, our neighboring lakes. It's, I think, at this time, we're just trying to figure out exactly what it is that we can do to continue to be a part of recycling and do our part to conserve and to continue to make sure we're doing our part in protecting the planet. So if our city manager and staff is saying that they are working on a different plan, that they are working on something, I think we all can give them that time to put something together. I think in the last six months, a lot of what we've had to deal with has been with economic related when it comes to Covid, that, you know, some of the things that we were working on is taking a little bit longer to put together. And so I just, I think that as we kind of start to, you know, get the grease in the wheels again and start moving more as we were pre-Covid, if there ever will be a thing, I think it really is important to know for our residents that we are working on different things. And so Frank, and I want to wrap this part up because I know we got a lot more to talk about. If we could possibly put out some type of statement or something, just kind of saying what's happening with this, you know, and in a way that's not, not in a way, but being truthful, but also letting residents know that this isn't something that's just done and that, and then we're moving on from it, that we're constantly working on something or trying to improve the situation for the city, but also for the environment. Sorry, I know that was a little long, but.
Now, that's great, Commissioner Simmons. I think that's a great idea because I think there really is a demand. And I think Peter's right that there really wasn't enough awareness about the cost of the contamination to the public. I know I was shocked when Rich brought it up, you know, Rich Mashad, how many months ago? So if everybody can catch up and we can find out what options exist sooner than later, I think that'd be great. Anything further from you, Frank?
No, sir.
Great. Our next speaker, and thanks, everybody, for that discussion. I appreciate it.
Yes, Eric will bring on our next speaker.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, I'm transferring Georgia May over to you now.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Georgia, welcome. And when you share with us, if you could please let us know your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Georgia May. My address is 2401 Riverside Drive, apartment 210.
Great, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to concede my time to James Devine.
What is James' last name?
I'm sorry?
You said you want to concede your time to James, and I didn't catch James' last name.
Oh, Devine, D-E-V-I-N-E.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Georgia.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Eric will bring in our next speaker in just a moment.
All right.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to start out by saying thank you and how appreciative I am for everything that you, as well as the commission have been doing. My name is Travis Benfeda. I'm a 31-plus-year resident of South Florida. For sake of respect and time to you as well as the commission, I would like to concede my time to James Devine, so he could speak using my three minutes that I'm allotted. That is all. Thank you.
If you don't mind letting us know your name one more time and your address, please.
Of course. Travis Benfeda. Address is 2960 North State Road 7, Margate, Florida, 33063.
All right. Thank you, Travis. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Mayor, Eric has another caller that will be with us shortly.
All right. Thank you, Deborah.
I believe it's going to be Robert Fogel. And if you could ensure that he provides his address, that would be great.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Travis. Have a nice evening. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Mayor, Robert Fogel is on the line.
All right. Hi, Robert.
Eric has another caller that will be with us shortly.
Yes.
Robert, if you could give us your address and welcome.
My name is Robert Fogel, F-O-G-E-L. I live at 10991.
And if you could ensure that he provides his address, that'd be great.
10991 Northwest 12th Drive, Coral Springs, Florida.
Mr. Mayor, he has a device on in the background. If he could have him turn it off or mute it.
Did you hear that, Robert? Do you have TV devices? Or maybe your own device? So if you can turn that off or mute it, that'd be helpful.
Hear you. Okay, that's fine. Good evening, Commissioner. I have three questions to ask you guys about the budget, up and coming budget. Are we discussing that now?
This is your time for public comment by all means. Share with us your questions.
Okay. My comment is, what are we doing about closing parks to raise revenue for building developments for rental taxation? That's number one. Number two, there is a 10% property tax that is being imposed on landlords or property owners on an annual basis. And I'd like to know how we're supposed to pass on a 10% increase to renters on an annual basis. I understand that it's possibly a state law. But it's very, very difficult to do that. And we are absorbing just an enormous amount of taxation on that particular level on renters being charged, I'm sorry, property owners being charged 10% every year. And I did write a letter to the governor of the state because I understand it could be a state law. And that doesn't mean that cities or municipalities can pass on a 10%. They had that judgment call to lower it or to be at a different level than the 10% that's being currently imposed. The third question is, is it public knowledge the amount of interest and principal that we're paying on an annual basis for City Hall? Thank you. I'll listen to your comments.
Great. We'll be having our comments later in this meeting. Robert, thank you for joining us two years in a row. Commissioner Simmons?
What were the first and last question he was cutting out, so?
The first question Robert asked was, are we closing parks to raise revenues? And the second question, wasn't sure if we could answer, was about a 10% property tax rate. How does that get passed on to renters?
The last question?
And the last question was, what is the principal of interest that's currently being paid at the City Hall?
I got you.
Thank you. I'll listen to your comments.
Great, thank you. Deborah, our next speaker, please.
And I am going to call upon Eric to let us know if Mr. Levine is ready to speak.
And Eric, thank you for helping.
And I'll be transferring him momentarily.
And again, Mayor, we do not have speakers outside at this time.
Gotcha.
You're on with the mayor. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Brooks.
Good evening.
This is Jim Devine. I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you briefly this evening. Do you need my address?
We do.
So it's James Devine, 2960 North State Road 7, Suite 102, Margate, Florida, 33063.
Welcome.
Again, thank you for allowing me a few moments to chat with you this evening. I appreciate the fact that this is a budget meeting, budget comment, so I'm going to limit my comments this evening. As I told you earlier, my name is James Devine. I represent Legacy Healing Center in Margate. We've been before you before and appreciate the forum and the opportunity to chat with you. We wanted to use this time tonight just to get a brief update of some of the things we've been trying to do to respond to some of the questions you folks had and some of the folks in the community had. And as I said, I'll limit my comments this evening, but I did want to follow up and let you know that we've made an effort to visit with every concerned citizen that we were made aware of in Coral Springs. We're very fortunate that we've had some unbelievable interactions. Today, we had three people that we spent half the morning with. And the feedback we got from them was actually unbelievably inspiring. So we're very grateful that we spent some time with them and we were happy to do that. One of the challenges that we've been facing in trying to just get the message out and be the good neighbors that we've expressed we've been for the last several years, is that some of the folks who have the seem to have the biggest concerns are unwilling to have a dialogue with us. And while that's disappointing, we want to once again put out there this evening. And if anybody has any questions or concerns that we could have the opportunity to visit with them, you can extend that. My contact information has been provided numerous times. And we welcome the opportunity to visit with anyone. And obviously, we welcome the opportunity to visit with you and either the commissioners or the city attorney, whenever convenient for you as well. One of the things that we are a little concerned about since the last time we visited is that there's been a few disturbing incidents, let's say, at our residences, our existing residences in Coral Springs. And I was hoping just to bring this up. We've been trying to really be the good neighbors that we have been in the past and use education and looking people in the eyes and sitting down in their living rooms and telling them a little bit about who we are and what we do. And that's been wonderful. But unfortunately, a few folks have taken a different tack and it's disappointing. In the last two weeks, we've had some people flying drones over our facilities. We've actually had someone break through the hedges with cameras, trying to take pictures of our staff and clients. And of all days, on 9/11 last week, somebody called in a false police report and Coral Springs Police Department had to respond to our residence, one of our new residences, and with a report of suspicious activity. And the nice thing is that the officers, as they've always been, were true professionals. And we had the opportunity to actually tell them a little bit about what we were doing. And we actually showed them our facility and the neighbors came over and introduced themselves as well. It was unfortunate, especially on 9/11, that somebody would take these type of tactics. But we have a little bit of a challenge that we were hoping to get your help with. Our clients and actually in our residences last week, we had three residents of Coral Springs whose privacy was violated. And we were chatting with one of the officers and the thing that came to roost is that if somebody was coming in any one of your backyards with a camera taking pictures of your children, the response would probably be a little bit different. And I don't think that anybody has the right to violate the privacy of certainly of your backyard. And we have an obligation under federal law to protect the privacy of our clients. And we really would appreciate any help that you guys could afford us and making sure that people are aware that violating that privacy is a violation of federal law. And we want to continue to offer our sincere wish to have any conversations we can with anybody in the community to tell them a little bit about who we are, what we're doing and what our plans are. The house that was called in on 9/11 happened to be one of the houses that's going to be our first responders' house, which is dedicated to taking care of those first responders from EMTs, police officers, and fire personnel who have some challenges in mental health and addiction. And it was disappointing that somebody would take that day to try and bring forth a personal agenda that's certainly not indicative of what we're all about. So I once again want to thank you for the opportunity to comment, to offer our sincere desire to be the neighbors of the community we have been and to do whatever we can to tell people who we are, what we do, and we welcome that dialogue at any point. And please extend to anybody who wants my phone number. We'd be happy to visit with them at their convenience. And I appreciate the time this evening. I'll let you get back to your budgetary discussions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Dialogue is always good. Are there any other public speakers, Deborah?
I'm going to rely on Eric to convey that answer.
Eric, anybody else there?
Mr. Mayor, there is no other callers at the present time.
Great. I hope you and your girls have a nice evening. Thank you very much, Eric. With that public comment as closed, we have a public hearings. Our first item is a budget presentation.
Mayor, before we move on to the budget presentation, I'd like to just bring something to the commission's attention. Our budget team has been recognized. I'd like to let you guys know about this. So basically, they got the distinguished budget presentation award from one of their professional groups. And this award represents a significant achievement by an entity. It reflects the commitment of the governor body and staff to meeting the highest priorities of governmental budgeting. In order to receive this budget award, the entity had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget practices. The guidelines are designed to assess how well the entity's budgets serve a policy document, a financial plan, an operation guide, and a communications plan. So I'm very pleased to announce that the Finance, the Governor and Finance Officers Association has awarded our budget team this high honor. And they certainly deserve it, but I fear there's no better way to start off a budget presentation than with that. And I received this today and I'm very proud of our team for this accomplishment.
That's awesome. Great job. Really wonderful. Thank you for your leadership, Catherine, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's really a team effort. So congrats, budget staff. They're an amazing group of people. So thanks. All right. That being said, I'm just going to share my screen and rock and roll. Probably shouldn't say that to a budget hearing, because that's okay. Good late afternoon and thank you. Welcome to our first public hearing for 2021's budget, where you all will be adopting the non-add blairm assessments, the TRIM, and the 2021 annual budget. We have met in person and virtually multiple times throughout the year in public forums for you to discuss the upcoming budget. And I thank you for your time in those discussions and those sessions. And we as staff have really put an emphasis this year on transparency more than ever. We've always welcomed public comment. We've always welcomed the public to be a part of our process with annual surveys, budget, workshops, website availability to submit questions. But this year, with the help of communications and marketing, we took our transparency to social media because we know that's where we can also put the word out there. So they helped us put out five different Finance Fridays. We posted one every Friday for the past five leading up to today, so people knew that you all would be voting today and talking about. that you all would be voting today and talking about the budget. So and last year, we posted two different educational videos, and that's still relevant today. We clearly put out our budget document. We had our first Budget Academy, which was very, I think, very well received. I'll put it that way, and received some positive comments there. Our Community Dashboard, I'm so proud of this. Ronald Goman has put his heart and soul into this, and it's been amazing. So this is where we put out to the community the different projects that city staff are working on. So when we get notoriety, when we get when we get positive comments and we get the notoriety on the different projects that we do or anything, performance management, I really view this as a complete city win on everybody that the work is going into that. So the Community Dashboard is there for the community to see. So we put information up that Communications, Marketing has put a budget release or a press release on that, sorry, and tried getting that information out. And we're starting to see a little bit of traction. You can kind of tell who all is going to the site. So that was really great. And of course, just quarterly performance reports. So we've really tried putting more information out. And it's been really great conversations that we've had and great to be able to talk on social media as well, back and forth. So this year, as we all know, we've been working through so many different environmental conditions. Clearly, we can't talk about this year without talking COVID. But before COVID, we were still working up to a budget. So we had a budget then. And then we had to work through COVID and work through several different budget scenarios with COVID. Social change, that we've had to look at that and kind of see how that looks to our budget. So we had conversations there. We have a strong real estate market here in South Florida. So that's just something different than that of the other parts of the US. We have a volatile stock market. Sometimes it's good, bad. So investments, that plays into our investments with the city. A slowing of consumer confidence, trying to figure out what's the right level that we are going to be forecasting for some of that, as well as knowing that business closures could continue to happen. So we have a strong economic development team that is out there trying to help the businesses as well. So these are all the different things that we are working with for this year's budget. So again, how can we talk about this year's budget without saying, you know, where are you now going into next year's budget and the effects of COVID on our revenues? That's really for, from a financial, for a financial perspective, health and safety obviously has other more important statistics. But from my perspective on the finances, how much revenue is not going to be received? And that is over right around 12 million over the course of three years that we're looking at. So that's what we have to look in a government budget. You have to have your revenues equal your expenditures, whatever your expenditures are. If your revenues aren't there, then you're going to have to bring down your expenditures. And what's that play? So that's something that we've been looking at in the current year, as well as what we're looking at into next year. So this year, and this is as of July, we are looking at having a deficit of right around, right under $3 million. And any budget director, any finance director doesn't want to see deficit at all. But I think that this, what you aren't seeing in this is the fact that we've had more than $5 to $6 million loss of revenue. And what staff has done operationally has closed that gap to be under 3 million. So we've basically shored up about $3 million with the loss of revenue to be able to not have more of a deficit than just loss of revenue. So again, hats off to all the department directors, you know, just city leadership for carrying this out. And it is still, it could be worse. So that is, that is that news. On the museum fund, we knew that this also was going to take a little bit of a hit on them not being able to have classes. We've already talked about the fact that the general fund will make that come in at zero. General fund will supply the funding to make sure that comes in at zero. The one fund that, those are the two funds that were coming in saying that we will have a projection of a loss as a deficit. Previously, I had the fire fund up here, and we have now been able to receive some of those revenues on the re-inspections. And Academy has been up and running. And we have other ways that we can make sure that that fund will be closing in in the positive. So that's good news.
Wait, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Can you go back two slides for just one second? I was writing down. I just wanted to write down this number.
Absolutely.
And hold on, give me a second.
The one thing also I'll say while you're writing, oh, go ahead.
I know it's all in the backup, but it helps me when I take my little shorthand notes. Okay. All right. And then the museum fund, can you go to that real quick?
Sure. And I will probably bring an updated number to next week's information because I'll have August for you as well. So I actually hope that that number, as I'm looking, it's starting to shrink a little bit even more. If you've noticed, every month, we're getting closer and closer, just because, again, staff operations is trying to conserve whenever we can to have as little service interactions as possible.
Right. And then I don't want to kind of deviate from what your planned presentation is, but if you can always let us know what staff has done to continue to drop this number more, I think that's helpful to get that out there as well. So you could just kind of let us know, whatever you can fit it into the presentation, let us know about that.
Absolutely. Just for a couple right off the top of my head, operationally, we know that we've been leveraging more technology. So operations, we had a plan for being able to conserve at least coming in your budget under 3% operationally. So within that, no, no travel, which is kind of in keeping of things, and try to leverage as many online learnings, free online learnings as possible. It's something that, you know, we know that we want to still continue to be the best of the best. But at the same time, in doing so, is we presenting to other people as well as us going to certain things. So that's one thing that we've been doing to do that. I know that, you know, in my office, like, we don't have to print as much, you know. So there are little things like that that you can conserve on every little thing really does add up. We've also gone in from a capital perspective and cleared out all a lot of the capital projects that were, let's say, more than two years old. So we were able to shore up money that way. So those are some of the tactics that we're using. Okay.
Thank you.
Bet. Now, on the reimbursement side, I've talked that every, every year, it seems that
I'm so sorry. Forgive me. When you say clear out the two-year-old capital projects, meaning out of like what's projected in the budget, so that means these projects are getting pushed further back? Or these are ones that were completed and just wasn't removed? Or can you explain it a little bit further?
Absolutely. So some projects, and we do this every year regularly, that we'll go, it's a part of the budget process to go and say, you know what? You finished a project. Do you have any money outstanding? So that's something that we always kind of shore up every year. And then we also look at some of those projects and say, you know what, how else can we, you know, fund it through through a different avenue? So it's more some of those questions that we're asking ourselves. Some projects, we, we had the conversation of, you know, is this the right time? And we come back and do this in another year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Catherine.
So here we are with the reimbursements that we are still working on. So Hurricane Irma, we are still working on Hurricane Irma. We have Hurricane Dorian. We have COVID. I think the great news with Hurricane Irma is the story of what we've received since January of this year is we've received more than $7.2 million this year alone. So Hurricane Irma before before January, I think we're at 1.3, and that was in last fiscal year. But there's really been a significant push by by the city manager, by Alex Falcone, the Emergency Management Director. Melissa Heller was very instrumental as well. So there's been a big group of us that have really been trying to push for that money. And we were able to bring in, and I know that the commission, you, I think, two or three times also had resolutions that kind of pushed that. So I think just the complete group effort there is really what helped get some of that money in. And that really does give us more of a cushion. It is money that we've already paid out, so it should already be a part of us. So at this point, we only have right under 700,000 outstanding. So that's been a lot of really great effort to be able to get the Hurricane Irma reimbursement money back to us. Hurricane Dorian, that was the level, the category five right off the coast that just kept churning for over a day. We did, we were prepared on that. So we did expend money for that. And that is something that we have submitted for reimbursement. And of course, COVID, this is something that we know that will get reimbursed. We have a couple of different avenues to be able to get reimbursed. We can go through the FEMA route. We know that with the CARES Act money that is, we're talking with the county on, and this is another avenue that we're able to get that reimbursed. So I do feel, I feel good that we have a plan on each one of these. And staff has done a really great job in documenting each of the the expenditures here. So we should be seeing this come back in due time. You just can't tell me, you know, I can't give an answer on when. Another great story is we received money from grants. This is something that we have a phenomenal grants team led by Kristin Hollowiki, and we have Bradley Falcone also on that team. And they are the central repositories of that $4.5 million that we have received. But again, it's a city effort because you'll have group, you'll have departments like police, fire, even HR come in and talk about some of the grant grants that they want to admit and will absolutely team up with them. So while it is something that I get to talk about, it really is a team effort throughout the city. And I've talked about the connecting businesses to grants and loans program. When asked, what can we as the budget and strategy department do for COVID to help our businesses or just to help people? Like, one of our thoughts was, we have a great grants team, yes. They're the ones that generally look at helping us as a city get money. Let's just turn that inside out. And say, you know what, we're experienced in dealing with the government forms, which can be completely daunting for someone who doesn't have to fill them out regularly. Let's help them. And we were able to bring for $1.4 million of the amount that we know to the city. So I always want to keep that number in there when we talk about the grants department. So overall, we're talking about adopting the budget. We have $233.4 million. We have 13 funds. And we have 893 positions. And this is the breakout of it. We'll talk a little bit about that more. This is a year that we really had to conserve. We had less money than what we did last year. So we couldn't add a lot into the budget for next year. However, what we'd have, what we can do are the replacement plant plans that we put into place to be able to make sure that we are keeping up with our playground replacement equipment. So you'll see different, you'll see a couple of different playgrounds come about. The light fixture replacement program that we put into into place. So you'll see some of those throughout, throughout the year be added. So this is the proposed highlights to maintain the current millage rate. The voter-approved debt service millage will slightly tick down. The fire assessment rates, we have one residential rate. We combine the single-family, multifamily into one residential rate. That's what most of the municipalities have in the county. And this is the first year that we have it that way. But you'll see that the businesses, you'll see a decrease there in industrial and warehouse and increase, institutional decrease. We have the residential solid waste assessment remaining the same. And the stormwater assessment will increase by $3.47 a year, bringing that rate that the ERU rate to 11566 to 11913. That being said, we, this year, I got a couple of questions on debt service. And I welcome the conversation on debt service as it, as it's related to the GEO bond. So I kind of call this slide the flag slide. It kind of looks like one to me. And you will see the GEO bond is the item in red. That's what falls on people's tax bill. The blue is what the city has gone out for debt for, and that is within the millage. So you'll see, we have a bond that comes due in 2028. And then at that point, we'll be paying for a couple of years, and then we have no GEO bond debt. So just kind of wanted to to mention that as I relate to the fact that the GEO bond, the the debt service, sorry, rate is going down for people on their assessments this year. Fire assessment, you can see where we are, follow the sun, and you will see the local services with full-service fire departments where what our residents pay for our wonderful fire department. And here are some of, again, the breakdown of the residential, commercial, industrial, warehouse, institutional, and what are some of their capital items. So that's one of the items you'll be voting on today on the fire assessment. Another is the residential solid waste, keeping, again, look at the sun. That's where we are. Kind of look there, trying to keep our rate holding steady. And you can see, this is a hard one, just to say there are many different levels of service. It's not one city really has the same as Peter Foy has schooled me on. So I appreciate the work that he and Bill Otto do on our solid waste assessment. Our stormwater assessment is a slight increase. And you can see the projects that are currently in progress. Our Corporate Park Drainage Project, this is partially funded by the Stormwater Assessment. And also, we have a grant that is also helping us for the Corporate Park Drainage Project. And you'll start to see the, or we, staff is working on the design for Meadows and Dells. So that construction can start, people can start seeing that work into spring of next year, or spring, summer of next year. And then we know that West Chester is something that needs some time and attention. So the design work is being done on that, and construction won't happen until a different fiscal year. So that's stormwater assessment that you'll also be voting on today. And you can see where we are in terms of other municipalities. And this is, this slide, let me just say that each city, again, deals with stormwater a little differently. Some cities put all of their capital in their assessment, and some leave some in stormwater and some in general. We are putting everything that it takes to run that stormwater into the stormwater fund. The reason, there are a lot of reasons for that, but I'll just highlight two. One is if we ever go out for grants, it's an easier way and grant, going out for grants, they like it that way. So why? Because it's the proper way to kind of put that information all together in one, so it's all tracked. And from different year, it doesn't, it doesn't move. And then the other way is we are funding exactly what we can afford to do. Use its abatement. This is the process of imposing for eight different properties that work has been done on those particular property households. They have gone through the notice process. And this is just something that you'll also be voting on. The Tree Trust Fund, we've talked about, a little about the Tree Trust Fund. And this is when you'll see work being done along Sample Road. And that is funded through the Tree Trust. Again, when I look at this slide, this is my, probably my favorite slider, the information that I keep in my binder at all times, is the general fund five-year forecast. And I'm very proud to look at that bottom line. That's where I want your attention to go to, seeing that we are clearly balanced for this year, and the green line looking downwards. And then looking out, go to your right, you'll see that bottom line always being positive. And that is a positive five-year forecast. So that is something that we've been working very hard to achieve. Back since 2018, we've been able to keep that positive trajectory for the five-year forecast. It's also something that I look as a information tool to kind of say, you know, what we learned back in 2018 on that millage increase was that people said, you know, we don't like it one large increase all in one year, that we would like it spread out. So you'll see, starting next year, again, not this fiscal year, we are proposing to keep the millage rate the same. But you'll see in the outlying years that it is small increments every other year, as we heard people with that. Clearly, we understand that people don't want tax increases at all. However, to be able to keep up with buying things and just being able to keep up and to keep our trajectory positive, this is one of the ways we are choosing to do that. Taxable total taxable assessed values are increasing. The first of that $10.39 billion is pre-recession. And you can see last year, we've recovered. And at this point, we are $11.25 billion total taxable assessed values within the Coral, City of Coral Springs. I have our employee.
Catherine, I'm going to interrupt you just for a moment. I want to go back because I want to use 2010 as a frame of reference. And it looks like it took about nine years to get back to something similar.
Yes. It did take, it did take a very long period of time. And I will say, I don't, I don't include inflation in this number also. So that might have taken a little longer back into the pre-recession time.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Our number of full-time employees, if you look at this blue area, this is what we are paying within all of our funds. And then the orange number up top, let's look at 2021, you'll see as 57. You'll see last year is 43. The difference of that is what we are adding at a contractual level. So that orange section are the contractual employees. So we have a contract with the City of Parkland for 41, 41 people headcount there. And then we have one person that we are adding to in 2021, the police and fire pension boards are coming together and paying for one person. So that's adding. And then we also have the City of Coconut Creek. And so that is, you'll see, added completely in there. When it comes to all our, our funds and what we're paying for, then that number is staying the same. And what does that mean in productivity? When we look at other cities where we are, again, follow the sun. When we look at other cities where we are, again, follow the sun where we are, we are very well under, I don't want to say the word understaffed here, but you can see by the line, this is the average. And this is really the productivity of your, of your staff on what we're able to accomplish with the people that we have. And I look at the next slide is the operating militaries. Is these are all the municipalities in Broward, you can see where we are. I then hone in to cities a little bit like us or surrounding us. And you can kind of see where we are still right in the middle of that range. How much of your tax bill goes to the city? I've really tried putting this information out this year. I appreciate communications and marketing really, um, trying to get this out too. So about 30% of your tax bill is going to the city of Coral Springs. So when you get that taxable and you look at it, um, not all of it is coming to the city of Coral Springs. You have other different entities that are receiving some of your tax dollars. So, um, I always, when we talk to people and their tax bills, that's the first thing. We just want to make sure that they recognize and we answer a lot of questions from there. So at this point, we are requesting, um, our recommendation is a proposed millage rate of 5.8732. And state law requires for one vote to keep the millage rate exactly the same. So at this point, any millage above the rollback rate is advertised as a tax increase. Even though I say over and over and over, the commission is looking to keep the military the same. So what does that mean in terms of the impact of the average single family home? If the average market value is 377,000, uh, the chances are they have some exemptions. And then that comes down to, let's say, 292,000. At that point, this is what their increase will be, um, about $70 per year. You break it down to the increase per month, it's $5.86. Really trying to capturing on those assessments, keeping them very low. If you can look at those assessments, they're, we're trying to keep them as low as possible. If you pick up your house and move it to a different city, where will, um, how much more or less will you pay in taxes? And you can kind of see from looking at this slide, I do, I talk about this slide. I've talked about this slide last year, I talked about this slide this year. You can kind of see some of the cities, how they have moved and maybe stormwater or solid waste. So we've gone a long way here. We've had a lot of conversation, uh, with, with you, with staff, with our employees. And the next time that we meet to go over the budget, um, is the second public budget hearing next, next week. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you so much, Catherine. Does anybody have any questions of Catherine at this juncture? Yes, Commissioner Simmons first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Catherine, so tonight we are only voting on which item specifically?
You are voting on all the non ad valorem. So the fire assessment, stormwater, solid waste, nuisance abatement. And you're also accepting, uh, you're also the tentative millage and actual the first reading of the 2021 budget.
Okay, and so when we, when we are voting for the non ad valorem, when you put up the slide that has, you know, that you showed us with the five year forecast and everything like that. When do we, I guess, when do we agree on funding every item on that list? Uh, at what, at what point do we fund that? Have we already voted to fund that list? Or do we have opportunities to look at those, uh, line item list before I guess making the final approval of the budget?
I think the, the conversations that we've been having has been leading us to this point. So at this point, I would say it is into the budget. You as the commission truly have at any hour to, to change that. We can only lower it, uh, we can't raise it.
Not, not just the military, but even just, um, again, that line item list that shows the five year forecast that goes through and shows each amount to every department. Right? I guess at any point in this process, could we go through and talk about the, the line items on there? And say, you know, for technology, you know, let's increase it by $20,000 or something like that. That's just an example, but at what point in this process can we as the commission do that?
You, Josh, Commissioner, we can do it now.
Well, no, I mean, it, I mean, I'm just wondering if it's not tonight, could there be another night? Or where we could go through and, you know, look at, look at things.
Yeah, so essentially this is our first public budget hearing for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, and the second one is exactly one week from tonight, it's 30. So if there's something in this proposed budget that you want to discuss, a potential change to tonight is definitely the time.
Okay, got it.
And if it's, and Commissioner, if it's more of a long range thing, we would do it during strategic planning.
Got it, that's what I was trying to.
Yeah, so if you're looking more at in the future, for sure.
If you're looking years out, in those years, we can, you guys have an opportunity to go back and look at the hard setting stone. Is that what you're kind of getting at the two, three?
Yeah, just kind of really figuring out, because I mean, you know, um, I'm always, I guess I just always wanted to, um, just understand more, because I mean, yeah, it's going into my second year. But as we go through the budget process, I always get new questions, new ideas, things like that. And I'm always curious as to where in the process, um, can we actually sit and say, if I were to be like, hey, let's talk about the technology department. And I know in our strategic planning, we usually do the long term things and stuff like that. But like, you know, if there was something that like, you know, I heard about this, I went to this conference and I heard about this magical product. And I was like, oh, we need to put this into the budget.
Yeah, so at, at.
I don't do it tonight. If I don't do it tonight, can I do it the second night? Can I do, I mean, the next week when we do this? Or like what, when would the absolute last time to make a change for this budget be possible?
So any changes that get made at this point to the budget would have to come from somewhere within the budget. Because we've already set the max millage and we've already set the max, uh, for, for the assessment. So if you came to us and said, hey, I saw this initiative, it's going to take $200,000, I want it in this year's budget. We would have to find that $200,000 from something within, from somewhere within this current budget. If you have something that you see later on and you would like it for the future, that's strategic planning. Will kick off our next budget cycle and we can build it into that budget cycle for the following year.
Got it, got it, okay, got it, okay.
Sounds good. So, uh, next on the agenda, specifically resolution 2020 dash 043. I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vignola and then Vice Mayor Carter, I'm sorry.
I, I want to go through a couple of things, but.
Okay, you want me to go first, okay. You know, I find it, congratulations, I think you guys have done an amazing job. I know that it wasn't easy to, to balance this. It is fascinating to see where's, you know, some of the revenues are increased and then you have the decreases. You're going to laugh when I pick this one. I was like, uh, state intergovernmental revenues and communications services tax, I totally get. Alcoholic beverages, I get, but what was the casino? Page 37.
Okay, um, I was just looking to John, uh, to the attorney real quick and then I'll chime in if you want.
We, we have, uh, met with the Seminoles when they expanded their casino. And they, uh, have agreed, uh, to, uh, provide some funding to the city because of the increased use of our police and fire that come from the increased use of that casino and the expansion.
A graduated decrease over time.
Yeah, they, they have continued to, uh, to uphold that. We don't have anything formal with them, uh, but they've continued to do that. So the expectation hopefully is that they, they will continue that. But I think, uh, the forecast is, 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 is what it is based on a conservative approach.
Okay, understood. And just one more clarification in the city manager's office budget where there were $4 million change. That was just, everything was repurposed to the, the different departments underneath it, correct? Page 39.
Yes, we did add emergency management, um, to, to that. And we did have a couple ins and outs when it came to the city manager's office, yes.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Vignola.
I just want to talk a couple of few things here. One, Catherine, do we have the, um, single family property increase from last year?
Meaning I'm, I'm looking at.
I know I.
Get that information to you. So hold on one second, if I look back at last year's, um, that I can look at what the difference was on the average market value. Basically, overall, I'd say 4.6% uh, would have been right around the, the number.
Okay, and, and the reason why, and Catherine went over the budget with me on Friday and I should have brought it up to you then and I apologize. But I just want, when we talk about an increase of, uh, $70.31 a year to the average home, um, and you gained, uh, over 4% value on your property. That's, that's an investment in, in, in your home and you'll see that down the road. And, um, you know, if I, if I tell you, you go ahead, you get a few thousand dollars if you go ahead and give us $70. I think anyone would take that bet and, um, you know, it's that's, I just wanted to highlight that a little bit. Couple of things, the, the five year forecast, you know, how, how that is trending in the right direction. And, and, um, the difference between that and before the, uh, large tax increase we did a few years ago, um, was, was tremendous. And, and I think, you know, uh, our residents said last time that instead of waiting 20 years to do a tax increase, they want to see those small increases. And I think that's important that all our residents know that this is what we're planning on doing. This, you know, multiple years in the budget, we're saying this is what we're planning on doing. So we don't hit anybody with any surprises and stuff. And I think that's a responsible prudent thing to do. And we look at the, the total full time employees and things, in, included in that, understand it's not just regular employees, right? These, these are employees that benefit the, the community. I know it's kind of like, oh, you see an increase in the amount over the years. But that's additional police officers, firefighters, all different areas. Grants, people that go ahead and bring in, I think, four and a half million dollars in, in grants we were getting this year. You know, those types of things, I think it's important to highlight some of those things. Then also our operating mills compared to other communities. If you go through and you look at that list of communities, I think a lot of people be very happy with the, the services provided by the city of Coral Springs. Based off of the operating mills compared to other areas. Our, our city staff does an excellent job providing wonderful, uh, services to our residents. And, and when you look at what they do it with, it's, it's pretty awesome. And then Catherine, I know budget, you don't hear it enough. And I know Frank, uh, city manager, they went ahead and, and pointed out, you know, you guys, uh, once again are recognized. But I just wanted to thank you, you guys have been awesome and Catherine you specifically and, and putting together an honest, sound budget. That's very responsible and tackling everything related to COVID and things. Um, and, and I think this, this budget is something that we all should be very, very, very proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for the commentary and thank you for pointing that first point out, really appreciate that. Uh, and because the property values went up, uh, the millage rate, the debt service rate went down by 4.8%. So that's other good news because our property values have increased. Catherine, you guys have done a great job. I really appreciate that this has been a more transparent process than ever before. Uh, with all the marketing communications efforts. I think that's one of the reasons why, uh, we had so few people relatively speaking earlier in the meeting regarding the budget. There are public hearings coming up, so we'll see if there are other public speakers, uh, that will be here. You guys have done an outstanding job. I do have a question, Catherine. We're coming up on, uh, wrapping up this fiscal year. Do we anticipate surplus moving from this year to next year?
I wouldn't say so because we're going to probably have, um, have a deficit. So we're going to have to cover some of that and that's going to have to come from, from reserves. So, uh, the good thing is, you know, again, we have Irma money that are coming in that will kind of help, help buffer that. We're to where we will still continue to have, um, more money in reserves. And next week I'll talk a little bit more about reserves.
Sounds good, sounds good. Commissioner Sarah, anything from you at this juncture?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, uh, want to, you know, thank Catherine for her efforts. She did a great job answering my questions in previous workshops and then also in our briefing. So I also want to give kudos for the Budget Academy. I think it's a great initiative that you have started with outreach to the community to get them more involved and answer their questions in advance. So, um, just, uh, continued a great work, uh, along with your team. So thank you.
Thank you very much. It really did take the entire budget staff, so I really my kudos go to them. Uh, again, I've said, imagine doing a budget on their own small laptops at home, hoping for good wire, good wifi. They've done an, an act absolutely incredible effort, so kudos to them.
That's great, well, thank them for all this. So are we ready, Frank, for item number two?
I have, I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
And Catherine, yes, you, you all have always been great with answering questions and, uh, letting us know what's going on. You definitely made our jobs a lot, a lot easier because we don't have to try to like double back behind you all and figure out if everything is legit in this. So I do appreciate that. And I, before we, I have one more question, um, and this is kind of related to the, the, um, the connect, combining our dispatch systems with Coconut Creek and things like that. When I was looking through the budget and I saw even under, um, under the police department, um, obviously I know the increase. There's always going to be an increase because of pensions and things like that. But the one thing that stood out to me was, uh, the, it says, um, for the additional personnel to have for the new dispatch services contract of the city of Coconut Creek. So are we receiving money from Coconut Creek to offset that? But it's just still have to be shown as my budget, okay?
Yeah, because you're seeing the expenditure line. And actually, if you go up in that revenue line, you'll see it go up at the same exact rate. So we are, uh, Coconut Creek is paying completely for their services.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you. That's it for my question, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else for Catherine? We ready to move on to item number two?
Sir, so Mr. Mayor, before we move on, uh, just want to again echo all your comments. And we appreciate it, staff did a tremendous amount of work with, with this year's budget and they did a great job. And, uh, our amazing city attorney will take it from here.
Great, thank you, JJ.
All right, resolution 2020 dash 43 is a resolution of the city of Coral Springs, Florida relating to the provision of Coral Springs stormwater collection assessment. Proving the assessment rate for the collection assessment, imposing a stormwater collection assessment on property located in the city of Coral Springs for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2020. Proving the assessment role, providing receivability, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date. Request mayor to hold a public hearing and adopt resolution.
All right, thank you, JJ. This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard, Deborah?
Mayor, we do not have anyone online and we do not have anyone outside.
All right, uh, seeing none, will I hear a motion from someone? Moved by Commissioner Vignola, seconded by Vice Mayor Carter. Any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, uh, item number two carries. Uh, next, John is item number three.
That's resolution 2020 dash 44, which is a resolution of the city of Coral Springs, Florida relating to the provision of solid waste collection services in the city of Coral Springs, Florida. Approving the assessment rate for solid waste collection services, imposing a solid waste collection assessment against assessed property located within the city of Coral Springs for the calendar year beginning on January 1st, 2021. Approving the assessment role, providing receivability, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date. Request to pu, hold a public hearing and adopt.
Okay, this item is open to the public if there's someone that would like to be heard. It's item number three, resolution 2020 dash 044.
Mayor? No one has called in, nor has anyone outside.
Very good, someone with a motion?
I'll move it.
All right, moved by Commissioner Vignola and seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Any discussion?
Uh, I just wanted to, or I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and it's your turn, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, support the, the conversation that we had earlier. I know that this has been a dialogue between all of us in previous workshops. But, uh, you know, this is, uh, something that we need to take very seriously. I'm, I'm supporting the initiative, but, you know, I want to make sure that we're looking at every angle. When Mr. Norris, our new director gets on board, that we're placing a trail like we have in the past. That we get a communication plan out to our residents and that we're looking at our options like we had, um, discussed earlier. I didn't chime in because you guys did a great job capturing everything, but I just wanted to reinforce that because I know that I've spoken to this both times in the past, so thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion on this item? Commissioner Vignola.
Yeah, I, I know we, we talked about, um, the, the solid waste assessment comparison between the various cities and such. But our residents really get a, a really good deal on us. We have the waste transfer station, we have the bulk pickup, um, more than once a month, like some communities and stuff. I mean, you look at the value there, we, we are on the extremely low end, especially when you compare those services. So, um, I, I think th- this is a, a great value for our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All right, carries unanimously. Next is item number four.
Resolution 2020 dash 45, a resolution of the city of Coral Springs, Florida relating to the provision of Coral Springs assessment of costs incurred by the city to correct public health, safety and welfare violations, approving the assessment rate. Imposing an assessment on certain real property which has been specifically benefited by the city's abatement of public health, safety and welfare violations thereof. Proving the assessment role, providing receivability, providing for conflicts, providing for effective date, request to hold a public hearing and adopt.
Great, this is a public hearing. Deborah, I imagine you have the same answer, but still. Great. This is a public hearing. Deborah, I imagine you have the same answer, but still open.
Mayor, I have the same response. There's no one outside and no one in the, in the queue.
All right. I think that's wonderful news. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Moved by Commissioner Sarah, seconded by Vice Mayor Carter. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Next is item number five, Resolution 2020 dash oh four six.
This is a resolution of the city of Coral Springs, Florida relating to the provision of fire service facilities and programs in the city of Coral Springs, Florida. Approving the assessment rate for fire services, imposing a fire service assessment against assessed property located within the city of Coral Springs for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2020. Approving the assessment role, providing receivability, providing for conflicts, providing for effective date. Request to hold a public hearing and adopt.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard?
The public has not requested to speak. Thank you.
Great. May entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Vignola, seconded by Commissioner Sarah. Any discussion? So I just want to share that I think a big part of why we had six public speakers last year and maybe one about the budget this year is there's a lot of collaboration, a lot of transparency. This is an election year. There's a lot of scrutiny. We did get calls about the recycling. But I really appreciate everybody's efforts to get us here. And I'm grateful that the community has collaborated with us to get here. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Next is item number six.
Resolution 2020 dash forty-seven, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Coral Springs, Florida establishing a tentative millage rate of 5.8732 to balance the general fund for fiscal year 2020, 2021, which is 0.2724 or 4.86% more than rollback rate, establishing a tentative general obligation debt millage rate of 0.2412, establishing the rollback rate to be 5.6008 and establishing Monday, September 21st, 2020 as the day that a final public hearing will be held at 6:30 PM at the city of Coral Springs City Hall, 9500 West Sample Road. Providing for an effective date, this request to hold a public hearing and adopt.
Okay, thank you, John. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to be heard?
Mayor, no one would like to be heard.
Okay. Very good. Motion by Commissioner Vignola. Seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries unanimously. Next is item number seven, Ordinance 2020 dash one twenty-one.
This is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Coral Springs, Florida, finalizing adopting the annual operating budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Reviewed, modified and approved by the city commission at meetings held on July 22nd, 2020, September 14th, 2020 and September 21st, 2020, which includes the budget for the general fund, water and sewer, fire, solid waste, charter school, stormwater, public art, debt service, health and liability, equipment services, tree trust funds, museum fund and capital improvement program funds. Providing that in event, a variation of the total budget is becomes necessary, this ordinance shall be amended only by a subsequent ordinance consisting of Chapter 166 Florida statutes, the charter and the court orders to the city of Coral Springs, Florida. Providing receivability, provided for conflict, provided for an effective date. Request to hold a public hearing, approve and set second reading for September 21st, 2020.
Great, thank you, John. This is a public hearing. Is it's open for anyone that's here, Deborah?
No one is here, Mayor. We're all set.
Very good. May hear a motion.
Move to approve.
Sean, Larry, got you first, but you got the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, September 21st at 6:30. We'll have second reading of what you, what we've had. City Manager Frank Babinek.
Mayor, I want to share some good news with the commission. I received an email today from Susie Hess Christman that we are going to be receiving another round of CBDG funds, a little over $730,000.
Great.
So Susie and her staff are working on what the guidelines are going to be around these funds, but this is another $730,000 we'll be able to put back into our community through a grant program. And we'll let the commission know as soon as we do on what it can be used for. So thank you, Susie, to her and her staff for, for being on top of this.
Great, thank you. And for those of you watching at home, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. That's great news, Susie. Great to hear. Anybody from the dais? Commissioner Simmons and then Commissioner Vignola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Frank, for that, I would love for us to maybe, I guess, once we figure out all the parameters and thing, have a conversation about, I guess, rollout and different things like that. I, I, I want to make sure that we get a better understanding of how these will be distributed because ob- obviously it can only be supply and demand, but we got to make sure that, you know, people that absolutely need this are getting it. And, and I know you have been doing, you're, you're doing a great job in previous things. I just want to make sure I have a better understanding because I don't know, you know, I'm sure some of us got some of those emails where people were having issues with just trying to get into the system. And, you know, like I had someone set their alarm, they're going to get up on, they got up on time. You know, as soon as the previous rental assistance that we had went out, they had some kind of glitch or something. And they tried to get back in and everything was sold out at that time, or everything was, you know, gone at that time. All the available funds were no longer there. So I just want to make sure that I get a better understanding of how we're going to roll this out or if, if, if it is going towards rental assistance or, or even small business programs or something like that. I just want to make sure we have that understanding on that.
Absolutely. As soon as we get all that information, I'll make sure that we inform the commission. And if there's any leverage or, or leeway we have there to tailor it, we'll also look at that.
Okay, awesome. And then just my general second point is just a, a statement about the budget. If you go through and you looked at that line item part, I know it kind of went by fast, but please, we have a very, we have all the information up on our website about the budget. Please go on there and you can see all of like the, the negative percentages of funds and things being removed and taken down and drawn down to kind of help, number one, offset the costs that were, the, the financial impact due to COVID, but as well as in line with what this commission wants as far as making sure we don't have wasteful spending in any of our departments or anything of our watch. I think it's important for residents to know that when we do set out those, when we have those strategic plans, those strategic meetings about our long-term goals, we are very, very, very honest and open about the things that we want, especially when it comes to making sure we don't have wasteful spending. And we are grateful to have a city manager's office that wants to work with us on that. So please take a look at that, that line item portion of the budget and you will see all of the things that are being removed and cut back on. It goes from, it goes from 0.03 percentage to like 25.92, you know, percentage decreases as well. So just take a look at that. And that's it for my comments.
Awesome, Commissioner. Commissioner Vignola.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, two upfront, there's a couple of recognitions I'd like to do. I just want to, okay with the commission first. One is for a gentleman by the name of Mondo Blanco. He was a Coral Springs American Little League coach from, I think, somewhere around 1978 up until, I think, last year. Been out there. I mean, when I remember when I was a kid, I think he might even coached Deputy Chief McKean way back when. But he's given a lot of his time as a volunteer in our community and I definitely like to recognize him, if that's okay with the commission.
Absolutely. Sounds good.
Awesome. The other one I wanted to do is there's the, there's a Duke Tips program where kids, I don't know if you guys are aware of that program where, where kids go ahead and they are able to take the SAT at a, at a younger age and kind of see where they're at and whatever. So I'd like to recognize kids at the Duke Tips program that got the state or national awards throughout our community. I think, you know, some of these are, are pretty impressive. They're, they're taking at, at 12 years old, some of these kids are taking the SAT and competing with kids that are going off into pretty prestigious universities and scoring pretty high. So the kids that got high levels recognition there, if, if that's okay, I'd like to invite them in on one of our Zooms and, and recognize them there.
I, I love that idea. Yeah, I'm very familiar with Duke Tips. Sounds good to everybody. Yeah, great. And that reminds me, I have a good idea that I'm going to share at the next meeting to help you have a good send-off. Because I appreciate your service all these years.
I appreciate that, sir. The, I just want to thank, you know, I, I know Commissioner Simmons mentioned, you know, all the things, the negative line items and things where things went down and city manager Babnick came in and, and got a little bit more than he bargained for when he took this job. And, you know, all our, all our staff and all his staff for all they did to make sure that this is a solid, solid budget. I know I thank Catherine and her staff and that's kind of the focal point there, but I know every department director went through their, their budgets line by line to make this all possible. And so I just want to thank them for all their hard work and these trying times.
Awesome. Anything else from the commission? Vice Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a clarification question on the recycling transfer station. So rather than it being incinerated, we can take cardboard out there and what else?
Well, at this point, i- it's cardboard. We're working towards getting a container out there for metals, recyclable metals and also for plastics. Yes, Peter, correct me if, or Bob, correct me if I'm wrong. It's just, it's just the cardboard compactor now, right?
Yes, Frank, that's correct.
Am I the oldest one on here that remembers when we used to have a commercial dumpster behind Morrison's cafeteria, which was the building department? We used to toss magazines and newspapers in there. That was a great place to go dumpster diving. We made it publications. But, you know, maybe we could, you know, when there becomes a mark of a paper, maybe we can do that again.
All right, anybody else? Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, seeing nobody else, we're gonna, we, we're going to adjourn. We're going to take about a five-minute break before we get to our city commission workshop. If you need more than five minutes, just raise your hand. All right, you're looking good. So five-minute break and we'll see you in about five minutes. I'm just going off and taking off my video and muting, but we have the same link, I believe, for the commission workshop. All right, thank you, everyone. Those of you watching at home, thank you for being a great part of our city.